I don't think it's streaming on the internet or anything.
All right. That record showed that Becky and Jean are absent, and Monty Tyson will be serving as a member of the board adjustments today. If you'll direct your attention to the minutes of the previous meeting. If I can hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented, or whatever changes.
Motion?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. We don't have to vote on it, do we? Jean?
All approved.
It's not voting.
All in favor, say yeah.
Okay, all in favor. Motions are accepted as presented. Before continuing with the agenda, the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body, and that state statutes require that the board base its decisions only on testimony given under oath. The board's decision on a matter is final. Any quasi-judicial decision made by the board can be appealed to Superior Court. Any decision on a request for a variance requires that four of the five members vote in favor of a motion in order for the request to be approved. All right, we're going to start today with BOA-11-2022. This is an application from the Benfield family requesting a variance of section 153.106, C4 minimum rear yard setback, which is 25 feet in R15 district. The applicant is proposing an addition to the rear which would not meet the required setback. The property, subject property is located at 2140 Country Club Road, parcel ID 22644.
Anybody that wants to speak on this particular case will need to be sworn in.
Yep.
If you raise your hand if you wish, you're entitled to tell the truth, if you want to tell the truth, it's actually coming.
I do.
Good afternoon. This is a variance request, as Greg stated, located at 2140 Country Club Road. Current zoning on the property is R15, property size is 1.01 acres. Current use of the property is residential, and the adjacent properties are single-family residential. This would be a variance of section 153.106, which is the minimum rear yard setback in the R15 district, which is typically 25 feet. The applicant is requesting a variance to construct an addition and a garage to the rear of the existing home. The addition and garage would extend out to the rear of the existing home approximately 41 feet, and you can see that on your screen, which shows the property approximately 2.5 feet off the rear property line. So the building would extend out 41 feet from the existing house and be approximately two and a half feet off the rear property line. There are some additional photos there. This shows the existing situation on the site from the GIS maps. It shows a property which is 200 feet across Country Club Road and across the rear of the property, and approximately 220 feet in depth. And some additional photos of the existing conditions show the rear of the property. The actual construction would go over here, if you can see my cursor there, would go on that side of the property. This is looking along the rear property boundary, with the wood line being the property boundary. And this is another picture showing the rear, or out to the rear of the property, and just photo off of GIS showing the front of the house. Any questions about the site location?
Is the concrete driveway going to be extended also?
Let's go back to the site plan here. Yeah, I would imagine, since there's a garage back there, I would imagine, yeah, that would be the case. And Ms. Benfield's here, she can answer all those questions, but it would make sense, yeah, that that would be extended to the rear of the property. The applicant's Board of Adjustment application is there attached to the packet, so you have that for your information. And with that, the applicant does need to address these four findings, and if you have any questions for her, she can come to the podium, she can answer those, so.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how are y'all doing?
Sorry, when you say application.
It's okay, I'm standing up in meetings all the time, and you have to sort of catch up on things, but I can just say a word or two, if that's okay. My name's Lori Benfield, I have two older brothers that own the property with me, along with me now, that my dad passed away. Both my parents passed away. Dad passed away earlier this year, so I will be living at the property. We've, this is the house we, I grew up in, we all grew up in, was built back in the 60s. And it's interesting, because I think we can all, maybe those who are here that grew up in Lincoln, when you're in school, in high school, you're ready to get out of Lincoln, but when you get older and you realize what life is about, it's a, it's a great community, and so I'm going to be moving back here from Charlotte and making it my home. We didn't want to sell the family home, and it's in good shape, you can see, it just needs a little love, a little updating. And so I should have noted on the sketch that that kitchen addition will also include laundry, because the laundry is now in the basement. So again, no one's getting any younger, and part of this is to get the laundry facility to up to the same level as the living space, and again, make things more accessible. But I'll just talk through a few things with relation to the questions that I was asked about. But again, in general, it is really just a little bit about the house in general. You can see the way it is in the picture. I researched it, it is considered, I think, a raised ranch. So the living space actually of the house sits on a full basement. So as it is now, when you drive in the driveway and park, you actually walk in the door right there in the basement, but then you have to go upstairs in the. Okay, sorry.
You're welcome to use that mouse.
Okay, awesome. Yes, so the picture on the left, actually, the cars now park there, right near that window, and there's a door, you can't see, that you enter the actual basement area there. When you get in the basement, it's a walk-in, full basement, but then there's about a dozen stairs to go up to the living space. And as you can see on the right, you have stairs at the front. And then as it is now at the back, let me see if I can flip to, you have to, so when you park down here, you know, beside the house, you sort of have to walk up a hill and around to gain entry to the back. So again, nobody's getting any younger, including me, and I'd just like to get the laundry upstairs, the living space, and then, so that's going to require a little addition, and then I'll do some work in the kitchen and add the drive-up garage. The other consideration for me is just, still getting over my dad's passing, but, you know, being, now I'm kind of the mother figure in the family, and want to take care of my brother. My brother's in town, he has been diagnosed with Parkinson's, and he's married and has a home, but we've all also talked about, if we have to take care of each other, you know, possibly setting up for that. So I know sometimes, and who knows, maybe I would have more medical difficulties than where he's headed at some point, but again, all of that, had all that in mind with trying to get this set up better, to get the living space, you know, everything where you need. But I'll go through the requests a little bit, the questions, unnecessary hardship. If the variance isn't approved, we, I've kind of already kind of tried to figure out other ways to do this. You know, there's not room on the left-hand side, if you go in the front, that's sort of not really that feasible either. And I've had a general contractor kind of look at the property with me, and, you know, the best setup honestly is, is to the back with everything. And you're right, it would require extending the driveway, so you can literally pull up, you know, and get in, and have it be accessible. The number two there, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property, you can kind of see that with the topography of the land, and then, sorry, I'm going back to this one, where the house was put to start with, back on that corner. Not really sure why at the time, but it was a long time ago, and they did put it back off, you know, off the road there in that corner. So, you know, you're kind of working around all that. Let's see, and then number three, did it, the hardship did not result from actions taken by the applicant or property owner. You know, this has been this way since the house was built, I didn't buy the home, I'm inheriting it. I love the home, but, you know, it's just the way the setup is situated, and want to make the best of it, make it a better place. And then finally, number four, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance, such as public safety, is secured and substantial justice achieved. I'm not an expert in this facet of your ordinance, but I would imagine from a public safety, I mean, as I have visitors to the home, it will be easier for people in and out, including the family. And in terms of development, there's a vacant piece of property behind us. I don't think she replied. I don't think she replied, I don't know of anything planned back there, it's been like that for years and years. You know, there would have to be considerable land work done back there if there was something to be put back there, no matter what it was. Because the land, you kind of have a gully kind of, you'd have to do a lot of moving of dirt back there to get that squared away. If she ever decides to sell, I wouldn't mind, you know, buying a strip of that, but haven't heard from her, you know, on that. But, so I think that's probably what I wanted to make sure I said to you all today. And appreciate y'all considering the variance application and looking forward to being back in the Lincoln community. So any questions that I can answer for y'all?
I don't think there's any, could you answer my question about like, if you'd heard from anything from the person who lives behind you for, for that property? And I mean, they're not here to speak against it.
We didn't hear anything.
Right, yeah. Okay, the only other question I have, and this is for you all, is just, she talks about the neighbor who built a garage back there. Do we know if we approve that for that Board of Adjustments? You know, because then it would fall kind of more in line of like a previous decision and then, or do we have any? I, we may not, I was just.
My guess is that it was built before the ordinance was there.
It could be.
That's my guess.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm asking our side, yeah, you don't have to worry about, you know, making any assumptions there.
Yeah, we don't recall.
Right.
Just out of curiosity, how far off the property line would the back corner be? It looks like it's going to be.
It's like two and a half feet.
It'll be pretty.
Against it, yes.
The other ones is over the property line. Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying, I was, when I was wondering for that, like, did we already approve that for Board of Adjustment? Because we've already set a precedent in that situation.
I think because the neighbor has already done it, you're going to line up with them, so.
In essence, probably so.
Well.
I motion to approve. Any more?
Hold on, yeah.
No more discussion.
So I need to close the public part of the discussion. Is that correct? Or I can just call for?
I mean.
Any more discussion or?
Jean normally closes the public part, so, yeah.
We just call for a motion? Okay, I'm, so I've heard a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
It was fairly painless.
Sometime when it's all done, you can come now, but you better bring mud boots.
All right, we are moving on to BOA 12-2022. Application from John Anderson requesting a variance of section 153.107C3 Minimum corner or side yard setback, 20 feet in the R10 district. The applicant is proposing to enlarge the porch stoop to the side which would not meet the required setback. Subject property is located at 226 West Main Street, parcel ID 17838. And if anybody who wishes to speak would come, oh, let me read this other part first. Do I need to go through the whole?
The quasi judicial, no.
Okay.
We just need to swear in.
If anybody who wants to, wants to speak on this matter needs to come forward and get sworn in.
As Greg stated, this is a variance request from Mr. Anderson. The property located at 226 West Main Street, currently is on R10. Property size is .216 acres. Currently used as residential. Adjacent properties are single family residential with the exception of the public library, which is adjacent to the site across High Street. They are requesting the variance for a minimum corner or side yard setback variance. Typically, the side yard setback on a corner is 20 feet. As you can see, this house is already right on the property boundary. It is this location here where my cursor is. And this shows the aerial photo of the property. So it is, again, these GIS maps are a little bit off, so this probably not extended onto the proper, or over the property boundary, but it runs probably along the sidewalk there, the right away of the road, as you can see in some of these pictures here. You can see the sidewalk location here. Mr. Anderson wants to extend the stoop over that existing step there. And, but it could not go any further out or extend out any further than the, the edge of the sidewalk. So let me go back to a couple of these photos here so you can get a better idea. So that's looking at it from straight on here. You can see the existing stoop which would come out to approximately here along the edge of the bottom step, which is right along the edge of the sidewalk. And then it's just a photo of the front of the house and then looking back to the north there from West Main Street down High Street towards the, the property. Any questions about the location of it? Again, Mr. Anderson would enlarge the stoop approximately two foot wider and several feet longer than the existing step and would go out to approximately the edge of the sidewalk at that location. This house was built, shown on GIS records sometime around 1920s, which of course, there's no zoning laws at that time, so no adherence to the side yard setback was required. So it is a larger house on a smaller lot. There's actually two houses on this lot if I'm correct, looking back at GIS. So you have 226 and 222, both houses sitting on the same property, so. The four findings, the fact they are in your packet. And John is here to answer any questions that you may have, so.
My only question is, I mean, it's not filled out completely, I mean, is that okay? The request for variance, you only filled out the very first section. I mean, is that something that needs?
Well, we have the maps and photos, I think, which kind of.
I just want to make sure, yeah, on our end, like, we were fine.
I think we're okay with that.
Okay.
You're just expanding the, the overhang, you're not, the stairs and all that are.
Yeah, it's really so simple, it's carry it. We're, we're going to end up with the end of the brick which is already encroaching on, you know, it's.
Right, right.
Sidewalk like Mark showed. And really, the house has been in the family for a little over 100 years, in my wife's family. And we, some of you guys know, we've done this for years, we're just trying to enhance it and make it better and a part of it.
So, but as far as structure going to the ground, it'd just be maybe a couple of supports for the roof?
That's it.
Okay.
Kind of match the front of the house, probably have some smaller column.
Okay.
But there, you know, probably be setback on the sidewalk.
Yep.
All right.
Well, do I hear a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. And I think that's all the Board of Adjustment's business. Can we hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I called the planning board meeting to order today for November 15, 2022. I will ask the Board to direct their attention to the minutes of the previous meeting and entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved from the previous meeting. This is going to be for, we're going to call case CZ-10-2022. Application from Bean Brothers Real Estate LLC requesting a conditional zoning change from residential 25, R25 to general manufacturing and commercial conditional district GMC-CD. The applicant is proposing to construct a 3,600 square foot building for storage, a mulch yard and a parking for the adjacent home and garden center. The subject property is located at southeastern corner of Reapsville Road and Lower Road, parcel ID 00512. I will now hand it over and ask for a staff report, please.
Okay, okay. So as you can see on this map, this is a map with the zoning. This is the property that's in question and you can see that it's GMC right adjacent to it. There's residential R25, neighborhood business, general business in the area. This is just an aerial of the property. They own, they purchased the Carolina Hardware, it's now Bean Brothers Hardware, and they want to purchase this lot. And what they want to do is, like you said, is construct a 3,600 square foot storage building. There would be a screening buffer, well, actually, well, hang on, let's go to the next. So there would be a screening buffer between the commercial and the residential areas. They're going to add some parking, they want to do a mulch yard, so these would be bins along the back, if you can see the cursor. They would have a couple trailers that would hold.
Pine straw and?
Straw, yeah. I'm sorry, pine straw. There would be one access point onto Reapsville Road. That might change depending on DOT to the access being on Lower Road, we don't know about that yet. They're showing 19 parking spaces here and there would be a, a storage area for rental equipment and then a rental equipment display area. As far as the land use plan, well, let's go back and look at there. So this is what the property looks like from the road. The land use plan shows this in the neighborhood business area. These planning areas are for small businesses, business clusters that cater to the needs of a relatively small trading area. Accordingly, they are appropriate for smaller sized stores and establishments. Such areas are not designed to be citywide commercial destination spots. Neighborhood business planning areas are designed to be compact in nature as opposed to elongated strips along a thoroughfare and located at key road intersections. New neighborhood business areas are strongly encouraged for location in association with planned residential developments and/or new larger sized subdivisions. Neighborhood business areas shall be located on at least two separate lots or a lot having an area of at least two acres. So the staff does view this request as consistent with our land use plan. This is a conditional zoning, so if there were any major changes to the site plan, it would have to come back before the Board for approval. The subject property is located in the watershed area. The site is allowed up to 70% impervious surface and the site plan shows there at 66.4%. The staff review committee had the, the same, you know, the usual comments. The city fire inspector would need to review and approve all plans prior to development. Building plans must be submitted and approved by Lincoln County prior to development. Erosion and sedimentation stated they would need, they have an approved plan already. So if there's any revisions, they would need to be submitted for review. NC DOT would require a driveway permit prior to development. A detailed landscaping plan would need to be provided. And the only comment staff had is the UDO states that if there's more than 15 parking spaces, they need to be paved. But that's in a retail environment, what those spaces shown, you have to have like a space per 200 square feet. So they actually have more spaces than they need because this is for storage and not retail. So they have the option to either pave those spaces or reduce the number. So staff does recommend approving the rezoning from R25 to GMC conditional district. We do. To approve the statement of consistency for approval of the rezoning request and that the rezoning be effective once Mark receives back an executed written agreement from the applicant stating that they abide by the conditions of approval. Any questions for me?
None for me, anything from you, ma'am? Monty, you got anything?
Dear, if you have any questions for them.
I don't think so.
Does applicant have any comments they wish to make? You don't have to.
Other than we've already purchased the property. The owner, the owner has, I have been in contact with DOT for the owner. The driveway is going to have to be moved from the front to the side.
Okay.
Street for backup for trucks and trailers that are coming in to not create more traffic hazard over there that's already existing.
Yeah, that's already, could be a mess.
And that sort of thing. And also, the applicant's already went around and talked to a lot of the neighbors in the area and there has been one request of moving the screening fence in the back to the interior part of the buffer instead of boring his property right up against it.
He looks at bushes instead of fences.
Yeah, he wants bushes instead of, so they're going to, you know, do that, move the entrance, they just want to make an update for that part of it.
That, moving the entrance, we would not consider.
Okay, no, you've already beat me to it. All right.
Does anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this? I would say probably not. Then I will call for discussion from the Board only at this time. Is there any questions or discussions to, from anyone on the Board? Yep, all right.
So I do have one state, I do have one question. The parking. Says the parking is going to be for the adjacent home and garden center, that is retail.
Well, that's, but they have sufficient parking on the adjacent property for the retail.
Okay, but they chose to include that in their request. I, I think that we should have a little stronger language on the paving or reducing the parking spaces.
For the site plan itself?
Mm-hmm.
We would go by the, the UDO, what it states for this particular piece because the others already developed. And so we follow the ordinance for what this would require.
Just for this.
And he's, he's not required to have 19 spaces for that building.
Okay. So it will be reduced or it will be paved, either one?
They have the option.
To do either, okay.
So if this was one piece of property, if they had bought it separately, then it would have to be.
Right.
Looked at in the sense.
Protect and construct in the retail portion and construct in the storage building, that would be required, yeah.
Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. If that is all, then I'll entertain a motion. So moved. I get a second.
Second.
Got a second, all approved?
Aye.
Aye, all right. If the motion passes, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, and it ends it for today.